I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Daniel Town Council meeting Monday, June 4th. I'd like to call any of the order. And I believe Josh should be here in a little bit. And we'll start with number one. Item number one would be a couple of public comments concerning any issue not on the agenda. You know, we have a late one, so they do that. I'll state your name for the record and...
Great. I appreciate being able to be here. I'm impressed with how many people are here. It's awesome to have you come and participate in your community. I'm Marilyn Crittendon, and I'm running for the at-large seat on the Wasatch County Council. I was born and raised in Duchesne, Utah. And my parents, Kip and Helen Merkley, were hard-working dairy farmers. And I remember, as a child, my mother and father gathering up all of us kids and loading us in the car and climbing to the top of Strawberry and soon descending down into Daniel's Canyon. And as a young girl, I was anxiously awake for that first view of Mount Tiptonobis. And then shortly thereafter, as you all know, you begin to open up this beautiful valley. So I've had a great love for this valley for a very long time. And I'm running for the Wasatch County Council because I'm very concerned about what I hear a lot of people being concerned about, and that is that we are the third fastest-growing county in the nation. And so this rapid growth is something that we want to address and that needs to be managed. I've had the opportunity, and I'm so grateful to Chip, because he was willing to meet with me probably over a month now ago. And I've also had the opportunity of meeting with some of the other mayors in the community. And I feel that if we have a plan and a vision, and we stay with that plan and vision, and we work together as community leaders, then we can accomplish the goal that we all have. I think we all love, everybody that's here in this valley is here because they love the beauty of this valley, they love the feel of this valley, and that they want to at least preserve that. Now, there's property rights, there are issues there, and people have the right to sell their land. But we can stay to the codes and the densities that we currently have in the general plan in our county. And if we do that, that plan right now does have, in that plan, spaces that will be left open with one house per 20 acres. So that'll leave us and help us with that rule feeling. And I think that that's a vitally important thing for us to work towards. I don't know if you're aware, but the county council this time has done a boundary change on the south end of the central planning area. The central planning area includes the north fields, which is on the other side of Midway Lane. That's a concern to me because that sets a very dangerous precedent that could allow another person to come to them and say, hey, we want to have you give us the same favor. And then it'll happen that we'll get those fields just piecemealed. And I worry about that. We want to keep this valley, the beautiful valley that it is. So I am a firm committed to keeping our density at the rate that it is already set in that general plan and not increasing that. And I also feel that it's so important to work with good community leaders to be able to accomplish that goal and for all of us to be able to come on that page. I know that all of you living in Daniel love that rule feeling, that's why you're there, and that's a wonderful place to be able to live and want to keep that. Just want to be able to have that opportunity also. I have the skills, I feel, to be able to work with other community leaders. I've had the opportunity of working with legislating bodies many times. I also have been a delegate back at the United Nations. And in these situations, you work with groups that are working with very difficult and intense tasks. And so I am a firm believer that we can come together when we're under a common goal and vision and be able to accomplish that. Hope that you'll have your ballots in the mail tomorrow. You should be there, and hope you look for it. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
We'll move into item...
Did you want to address the council in the public?
About my problem?
This is the time that they do that right now in the public?
Oh, I can't. Can I just say, I have to give up.
Yeah, you can sit there if you'd like. Just say your name for the record and just talk.
Okay, I'm Marilyn, and I've lived out in Daniels about four years. And I have a problem with dump trucks coming in Coleman, going out, and I get all the dirt. I'm one who likes to hang my coals out on the line, and they were getting rather ugly. And I thought, why? Then I got thinking that some, a neighbor said the other day they went in and out 12 times. So I get all that dirt. The road is right next to the dog pen, so I get all that dirt. Coleman's, when I first went out, Mary Jo Coleman bought that place of, what's her name?
Betty.
Betty. Big one. And I didn't know all this was going to go on. But I'm a widow now, and I appreciate getting something done so that they can't go in and out, in and out. I need to get all the dirt.
Where's the address? Where are you at?
I'm on 2500 South Daniel Road.
Okay. They're not keeping the road, or the dirt road, the way it's been down here at all, or it needs to be covered with something else, it's hot so best.
Well, I appreciate it, but they can move the road over a little ways because they've got ground there. And then, black carpet. But I don't know, I'm still fancy if they would do that or not.
Any other comments, or have you finished, or you don't want to interrupt?
Yes, I'm through.
Just want to make sure that anyone had any comments or any other comments, I don't want to forget any.
Are the Coleman's a business? Is that a business there?
They are a business. Currently, that shop is in the county.
So follow that side of that.
Coleman's go in at night, but if the road was done something with, then it would make it better. Or any, there's sometimes a lot of traffic going in and out.
Some sort of dust pressure.
So is this Coleman trucking using this road?
No, tug wall.
Oh, so they're multiple?
Multiple, okay. The marsh is the same way as I am.
Any other questions for the council as far as the public comment?
Is that something that needs to be addressed?
Things that are on agenda items or something tonight?
Yeah.
We'll take that concern and get an answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be tomorrow or the next week, but it won't be terribly long.
That's all right.
Yeah, item number two, which is a public hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to go out of regular session into a public hearing.
So moved.
Number first, we have a second.
I second it.
A second, all in favor?
All in.
Aye. We are now out of public, ready to public hearing and out of our regular session. To start off, this, item number two is a disconnect request of 2777 South Mill Road. Turn the time over to applicant who'd like to take their parcel and basically leave the town of Daniel.
Corbin, let everybody know she hears you.
Yo, I'm a little, I'm a little myself here, so.
Most people don't have long hair. I mean, it's like, you know? There you go. Does everybody have anything to put on the record?
Yes, please.
Counsel, it's good to be here. My name is Corbin Gordon, for those of you who don't know me. I grew up out in Daniel, those were my old pecking grounds. Mom and Sherry Gordon are my parents. I think our family goes back five generations on the same piece of dirt out there, so love Daniel, love everything about it. Tonight, I'm here representing Nate Orton on a request to disconnect. He's applying for disconnection from the city on a 3.8 acre, 3.85 acre, acres located at the intersection of Mill Road and Highway 40. I think you probably all are familiar with that piece of property. The property is currently within Daniel Township, and it's currently zoned R5, which is one residence per five acres. I'm guessing the big question for everybody here as well as the council is why? Why is he asking to disconnect from your city? There's multiple reasons for that. The first one is that the three corners at that intersection are already a part of Heber City. And those three corners are already zoned C2 or CMP. That zoning already allows for hotels, restaurants, retail, medical, banks, offices, et cetera. It's a very broad zone, and those three corners have already got that zoning approved on. The sewer is stubbed just 60 feet away from his property line, just right across the street. Culinary water is stubbed just 60 feet away as well. And all that Nate is asking for is that he gets treated the same as his neighbors. He wants the same rights and opportunities that the three adjoining property owners have on their corners to develop. He needs access to the services and primarily sewer in order to maximize the value of his property, and that's why he's asking to be disconnected. The biggest problem that he has with staying in Daniel is that Daniel cannot provide access to sewer, which dramatically reduces the use and density availability on his property. Daniel, from what I understand, has expressed no desire to enter into an interlocal agreement to provide sewer. And in fact, there's some of the founding documents that kind of state that the real reason that he wanted to incorporate Daniel was to control growth, which I respect, but that's kind of one of the ideas that was behind incorporating. At this point, it appears that possibly one of the primary strategies in controlling growth is to not develop adequate infrastructure, which puts the city in a very difficult situation when it comes to people like Mr. Orton who have property that can be developed. And it's one of the primary reasons why someone will be granted the right to disconnect from the town. The other problem has been that Mr. Orton has been here before the city, and he's asked to have commercial zoning applied to his property. And as you guys know, your property, your land use document from 2009 establishes that this is where you want your commercial zones to be, along Highway 89 and along Highway 40. But as he came in and asked for that zoning change, thinking that that would be a very simple process, there was a lot of public outcry and a lot of kind of difficulty that came from the planning commission, and he realized that it wasn't going to happen, and he was forced to withdraw. He was very frustrated by that because he's like, why are you telling me that this is where you want your commercial zoning, and then you're going to stand in the way of me asking for commercial zoning? It doesn't make any sense.
When was the question? When was that? When did you tell me along the avenue?
When was it, Nate? It was, I've got it in the...
About three and a half years ago.
October 7th, 2013.
So, just curious, since then, it's a long time for towns to change and plans change and people talk to people. So have you applied for anything to substantiate anything that you're asking, talking about?
No, but in discussions with Nate, right now, apparently, one of the neighbors named Rob has come in and is asking for commercial zoning in a piece of property that's very close to his, and is kind of getting the same response back. And so at this point, Nate's going, look, they're giving him the runaround, it's making it very clear they don't want to grant commercial property, commercial zoning where they said they wanted to. And he's saying, you know, that's number one, but then number two is, even if you grant it...
The running around, would you maybe use a different word than that, or just play to the process? I don't believe anyone's getting the runaround from anything.
Well, I mean, you can call it what you want. Their perception would be that they're running into stiff resistance beyond what they ought to be running into based on your land use, okay? So, really, I think as we stand here today, I think the big question and the big argument is that you'd probably grant this today, and nobody would blink an eye, but for the fact that there are residential neighbors that are affected. And I completely understand that, and I completely respect that. And Stephanie, I know you're right by this piece of property, and I fully expect that there's going to be some discussion tonight about that. What I do want to point out is if that's the only reason why you're doing it, it's not sufficient to deny the disconnection. Let me walk you through. First, the town of Daniel has already recognized this is going to be a commercial corridor. And it's been there for almost 10 years in your 2009 document. In that document, the town states it wants to concentrate the commercial zone along Highway 40 and along Highway 89. To my knowledge, even on that document that's been in place for 10 years, no one has been approved yet for any commercial use along these corridors, which is a concern for Mr. Orton. Over time, I think that everyone probably understands that these commercial corridors are going to become primarily commercial. And the reason that I state that is based on what's happened in the other commercial corridors here in our valley. So let me walk you through a little bit of an analysis, okay? There's three major commercial corridors in Wasatch County. The first one would be Heber City Main Street. Second one would be from the hub out Highway 40, which is the one we're talking about here. And the third one would be from the hub down towards Charleston, okay? So if you look at the history of those commercial corridors that start with Heber City's Main Street first, Heber City's Main Street primarily started as all residential, okay? Over time, clearly, that has gone dramatically down. Anybody want to take a guess on how many residential structures, not residences, but structures remain on Heber City Main Street? There's, counting them today, there's 16 of them left on Main Street, okay? Of those 16, how many of them are still used as residences? Any guesses?
Five.
Pretty close. There's four, right? There's only four. One of them sits in between Dairy King and a hotel. The other three sit in between Walgreens and O'Reilly's. There's three of them right in a row and a left, and those are the only ones, okay? And that's the natural progress of a commercial corridor. That street was full of residences at one time, and as the commercial came, the residences changed because it is a recognized commercial corridor. Let's talk about the one that goes from the hub out to on Highway 40, the one we're talking about. Any guesses on how many residents are still left that are actually accessing their property off of Highway 40 for residents along that road?
Did you guys not study for the test?
Zero.
I want, I think they drive up and down the road every day.
Trying to think, you got the whole trailer, the whole, well, no, the trailer park on that side, so you count each one of those?
Well, you mean, if you want to, okay. But the idea being that if you go through and there's actual residences that are actually, there's probably, I counted today, three, maybe four, right? There's the Clydes, there's the Webb's that are up above the Wolston Humes. I think the Wolston Humes actually access, they don't access off of the actual highway, there's off the secondary road, there's just very few of them, right? In that same stretch of property, how many businesses are there established along that commercial corridor? Any guesses? Somewhere between 20 and 30, right? And so the argument that this should not be allowed to go commercial, guys, it's already commercial. You recognize it as a city. It's a commercial corridor. It's already developed as a commercial corridor. It already has been developed as a commercial corridor. Now, I think that it would be very difficult, so let's, well, okay, so one more, going down the other direction, the hub down going towards Charleston, I'll save you the thing, there's zero on that one, zero. So if we review back and say all of the commercial corridors in our valley, okay, there's approximately, probably seven or eight residences left on them that access off of them directly. That's it. And in those same commercial corridors, there are well over 100 businesses that are accessing off of those, okay? That's what a commercial corridor is, and that's what a commercial corridor becomes. I think that would be very difficult to argue that it would be beneficial to our valley if way back in the day, in Heber City, for example, they'd come in and said, hey, you know what? We're going to limit the commercial component of Main Street to a couple of blocks, two or three blocks, and that's it, and we're just not going to let any more commercial come in. It's just not a realistic way to address or deal with a commercial corridor. Everybody understands that. And that's one of the hard things about this, right? This isn't the first time that this story has been told. It's been told many times by many families along commercial corridors all throughout the history of our valley. There have been a lot of people on Main Street who I'm sure lamented the fact that they laid down their roots on Main Street and they loved their homes, but over time, they looked at it and said, my property's worth too much money to live here anymore, and I don't want to deal with the commercial, and I'm going to need to sell. Because they built on a highway, right? They built on a highway. Now, there have been a few of them, I'm sorry, but I'm presenting right now, this isn't open for questions. I'll take questions in a few minutes, okay? So, sorry, let me just kind of get back to what I was talking about there. I'm not standing here saying that I don't have tremendous compassion for those who have gone before and those who will come in the future, who have built along commercial corridors and who ultimately are going to be surrounded by commercial uses, right? The ones in Heber, and bless their hearts, there are still a few of them there, and they have every right to be there, but the ones that stay there, stay there with commercial property all around them. That's what happens in a commercial corridor. And you can't stand and say, we're going to leave a residential use on a commercial corridor and make everybody else shift around when the area is not meant for residential as a corridor, okay? Asking to be disconnected is not a function of a disrespectful neighbor. Nate doesn't want to disrespect anybody. It's a function of building along the highway. That's all that's happening here. And all he's asking for is the right to be treated like everybody else on the highway, all up and down, those 20 or 30 businesses that are already there. Now, in my mind, and this is more coming from me as an old boyfriend, Daniel, the real tragedy is that Daniel has stated over and over that it wants commercial along these corridors, but it doesn't seem like it's done anything to secure your corridors. Daniel has few services to offer the property owners of all of these areas, with sewers the primary clearing of mission. It has put itself in a situation of getting all the negative impact of the commercial growth that's going to come without benefiting at all from the tax base. Heber City has been allowed to stretch out the highway to take all the commercial base, which in my opinion, well, and this comes from representing Midway City, I'm their city attorney, and so I'm kind of deep end on what happens from a development standpoint. Everybody knows that businesses and commercial development is actually a boon to a city because it provides positive cash flow, when new homes actually are a net negative to your bottom line, right? And I think that Heber City has kind of clearly said, we're just going to take all of your commercial corridor and leave you with all of the, all of the net negative, which makes it very difficult for your city to survive. Nate Orton coming in and asking to disconnect tonight isn't a bad guy here. He's just a property owner, he's approached the city, and the city has kind of indicated to him that they don't want to grant commercial zoning where he is. The other problem is that the city hasn't really done much to provide the services that he needs primarily sewer, which is a problem. As we're going to go through the argument, the legalities of this tonight, the primary argument, and the simplest way to disconnect from a city, is because a city cannot provide services. It's just simple. It's as we say in law, it's a clean kill, right? If you can't provide services, you just can't deny a disconnection. If the idea was that you could control growth by not providing services, that's a mistaken idea, because all it does is set up a scenario where all of the properties on your edges can start simply disconnecting from you based on the fact that you don't have the services necessary. Now, as we go through, I've given you an outline tonight, and I'm not going to go through specifics on this, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands a few things. Disconnection is controlled by state statute, okay? And you've got a big thing there, there's a bunch of documentation on this. It's very specific, okay? Does not leave the decision up to the municipality just based on, hey, we don't, we don't want to, or we don't think it's a good idea, or, you know? It's very specific, and it's very specific because of the state legislature was concerned that there would be times when cities would say, we're going to keep you in, we're not going to provide the services necessary, but we're going to force you to stay in our city anyway, okay? So this is set up where basically all that the applicant has to provide and can show is that this is a viable option for him to disconnect. And what viability means is, for example, say he was at the very, let's just say your city was up kind of at a point up here, and he's on the very northern end, and there's no services up there, and no way he's going to get services from anybody else, okay? Then he comes in and he says, I want to disconnect from your city. Well, you would have a basis to say, that's really not a viable request because you can't get the services that you need, and it's going to create problems for us, and so we have a basis to deny you. But if you have a viable way to demonstrate that another municipality can provide the services that you need, you really don't have a basis to deny him. And this is what's called a preponderance of the evidence, more likely than not, which is the lowest standard, right? All he's got to do is show that another municipality can provide these, that it's not going to hurt you as a municipality, and he has the legal right to disconnect, okay? So what I've given you today is an outline of everything from a statutory standpoint.
Quick call, guys, so he's going to quick call and say that it's not going to hurt you as a town. How do you qualify that?
So let me walk you through, and I'll give you that. That specific analysis is in here. I've already kind of walked through the introduction stuff. If you turn over, you'll see that there's a discussion here about the viability of the disconnection. I've already covered most of that. The fact that there's three quarters all around him that's already part of a municipality that's zoned commercial, there's also services that Daniel can't provide that are within 60 feet. All of that makes it, I mean, it's just a viable disconnection. He can disconnect from you if you go in and ask to be annexed into Heber City, and there will be no problem from applying the types of services that he needs. So it's not that he's going to be stranded out there. So, I mean, if there's ever a viable disconnect request, this one would be it, everything's right there. It's not like he's got to drag it the line two miles to get to his property, okay? Next one, over justice and equity require that territory be disconnected from the municipality. The big one here once again is the fact that he cannot obtain the services really that he needs from Daniel Township primarily sewer, and that they're right across the street. He did come in and ask for commercial zoning and it was turned down, and based on that, he's throwing his hands in the air, you know, guys, you know, I came in, I wanted to work with you, but you told me no, and so I want to go to a municipality that wants me. And so Justice Equity says you can't require him to stay in your municipality if you're not going to grant him the zoning and to ask for and provide the services that he can get right next door. Number three, the disconnection will not leave your municipality with an area within its boundaries for which the cost requirements or burdens of providing municipal services would materially increase over previous years. I think the only thing that you're possibly providing for him is maybe culinary water, and so I just don't see that there's any way that this would increase your costs in any way by disconnecting this piece of property. It's not like you've invested huge amounts of money in infrastructure planning on providing service to this property. Now, if we had somebody who had put in a massive subdivision and you've upsized lines and those kinds of things, you'd have an argument there, but that's ridiculous.
So if, that was three and a half years ago that that application was made, and you're making a lot of hard facts as far as what the town will do in these areas. So you're talking about maybe some things that were discussed three years ago or three and a half years ago in an application, and there've been no application up to this point. So I'm trying to follow some of your stuff that you're telling us because some of these things you're saying that we, 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 there've been no application coming for us to be able to give you those answers that you're telling us we, we are doing that.
Well, based on where Nate was three years ago, he got the sense that there was not a desire to grant commercial on the property, and based on what he's seen with his neighbors, there's still not a desire to grant commercial on the property. And he has the right to apply for disconnection at any time, I think you meet the standards, okay? Number four, the disconnection will not make it economically or practically unfeasible for the municipality to continue to function as a municipality. We've done a little bit of tax analysis for you there to show that certainly the amount of money that you're getting from the sales tax off the property would not cripple the town, and so there's nothing, no initiative made there, that this would, this would cripple your capacity to continue forward as a municipality. Number five, the disconnection will not... Number five, the disconnection will not leave or create one or more islands or peninsula of uncorporate territory. Clearly, that's not the case. The three quarters all around us have already been annexed into Heber. This would not create, it would actually square off and make probably a cleaner boundary than the one that already exists. Number six, either Wasatch County or Heber City is capable in a cost-effective manner without materially increasing the county's costs of providing municipal services and providing to the area services that the municipality will no longer provide to the area due to the disconnection. We've already talked about that, the services ran across the street. The last analysis here is the disconnection will not have a negative effect on any of the following municipality as a whole. I don't see how this could have a negative impact. If there's already a desire to grant commercial zoning on this, and it's part of what you want, I'm not sure how you could say that it would negatively impact your municipality as a whole by granting him to disconnect and allow him to move forward with a commercial development where the services are available to him from Heber City.
Didn't you kind of say a few minutes ago how important, what little commercial the town has, what important that commercial corridor is to a town? Didn't you say that a little earlier? So if that's going to be a commercial piece of land, wouldn't that be pretty important to the town of Daniel?
Certainly would, and that's why I'm saying, surprising to me that we're sitting here where we are with someone asking to disconnect. You would think that you would be out talking and providing services that would be necessary to keep him in, right?
It depends on the time, 10 years ago, in two years, in five years. Is there a timeline that has to be met by a municipality to meet that requirement of what it might be able to service in the future?
Well, to my knowledge, say he wanted to come in and apply tomorrow, I've not heard any indication from anyone that the town of Daniel has gone out and asked to look at an interlocal agreement that it wants to allow sewer into its city. I mean, I don't, I mean, you guys can tell me, but I just don't think that those discussions have occurred, and...
You wouldn't know if they did or didn't, if that happened.
I wouldn't know, you wouldn't know that, but I don't know that you want to say one way or the other, right? Okay? So adjoining property owners, that one I've addressed. I recognize that there are adjoining property owners that are going to be very upset by this. I have tremendous compassion for them, I understand that. I've already kind of walked through the analysis on that as far as what happens in a commercial corridor, and so I don't think I need to revisit that. Existing or projected streets or public ways, this doesn't affect any of those. It's not like you have a transportation plan that this would blow up. Water mains and water services, to my knowledge, this wouldn't affect in any way anything that you've already planned for in your city, so you can't really use that as a way to deny sewer mains and sewer services. You don't have any, and so you can't really use that. Law enforcement, it just doesn't adversely impact it. And currently, the zoning on the property is an R5, which is one per five, which really, I mean, it's just something that doesn't work on that piece of property that's next to a highway. It's not useful, it's a residential piece of property. And you're really kind of handcuffed in what he can and can't do with it because he hasn't obtained commercial zoning on it, okay? So in summary, let me just kind of walk you through how this works. So he's asking for disconnection tonight, it's a public hearing, then he gets to make the decision on it. This isn't really an appealable thing. Normally, you would say this would be finding that you might as a city council, and then it would be potentially appealed to the district court. It's a little bit different where this will just simply be a lawsuit that he would find to get over, and then it's a new hearing in front of the district court. The evidence is taken, those kinds of things. So that's kind of the process. My hope is that he doesn't have to go through that. Based on the analysis that I've given you, I don't think you've got a basis really to deny this. Now, I'll take one step back and kind of give you my rule of law discussion that I give to many of the citizens over in Midway, right? It's a hard thing. We have a lot of public comment over there, I deal with this all the time. There are people who get very frustrated and upset. And my answer to them is, look. The rule of law protects all of us. And the one thing I guarantee people in the city of Midway is, the law will be enforced, whether it cuts for the city or against the city, because that's the only thing that everyone can rely on, okay? There are people now who, in their public comments, stand up and they'll go, "Rapman, you know, like, whoa, okay, I know that the law doesn't allow this corridor," and then they... I'm like, "Well, why don't you understand that the law doesn't?" Right? And the city over there understands fully that there's times when I'm saying, "Guys, yes, what? I recognize you don't want a development next to you. I recognize it, I understand it fully, but guess what? The law allows it. And there's nothing you can do to stop that if the law allows it. If you don't like the law, change the law. But if the law says it, that's what you've got to do, okay? It's predictable, it's the way that it needs to be, okay? We're not alone to ourselves in this country. The state legislature has created this law, it's very specific, and if you can meet it, you get disconnected, and the level is very, very low. I would ask you to just simply grant him the disconnection today. He's entitled to it, I don't think that there's any legitimate reason why you could say you can't. Nothing certainly that I don't think, I just don't think that you can justify it under the law. And so I'm not here, I know that it's difficult when it boils down to it, the law is what the law is, and he complies with the law. Are there any questions at all? I know we had a question from one of the people out here. Any questions, more than happy to answer anything.
Brad, first, well, as a public speaker, if they'd like, and in the county of last inspection that they had.
Sure, for sure.
Your analysis is not a fair comparison. In the fact that I don't think, I don't, you don't have any access to the court, do you? I mean, all your examples have access to the court. You didn't talk about any rules that go off of the court, you know, what the numbers are involved. I think that's the only fair analysis, because he doesn't have access to the court, but I didn't know he had access to the court.
All of those four...
So all of his equipment and stuff's going to have to go in. I don't know what we're going for here, we're going for public access or retail? What are we doing?
It would be, I mean, all he's asking for is what the other corridors have already been granted as well, which would be probably C2 zoning, is what the other corners have been granted.
They're in another municipality, so we'd probably want an application before we actually discuss something, don't you think?
No, because what's the point of coming in and applying for commercial zoning if you don't have the sewer necessary to develop the property? You can't provide that service. So, I mean, that's one of the primary things. Like I say, that one's the clean kill. It's like, guys, you know, yeah, I can come in and apply for a commercial use, but you're going to limit me on my capacity because you don't have sewer.
And what you're saying tonight, if the law says that that one item, maybe the legal that the council could, excuse me, that's a reason for disconnect, that one item?
Absolutely, absolutely. That one's the largest one. When a municipality cannot provide the services necessary, that one is the fundamental one that's the easiest to argue. Because you can't keep somebody in your city if you're not going to provide them the services.
And you're saying if you're not going to provide them?
Well, once again, you're not providing them right now.
Correct.
Question.
Yeah.
Why did he buy it to begin with when he knew what the things are there? They had the... Or did it have a special thing for the zoning to allow him to do the landscaping along as he used the residence? But we didn't have sewer then, but he needed that. Why did he purchase that property?
Because I think in your own land use thing, it says it's a commercial corridor. And...
Commercial corridor, but it all takes time, so...
Can I answer?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so...
Wouldn't mind naming, you know, Nate Orton.
So first off, I bought it for a long-term investment, number one, because I saw the potential of the property.
Yeah, and I can see that too.
All right. Secondly, I was looking for a place to run my landscape company in this county, and I looked and looked and looked. Well, the town of Daniel, in your rules, in your bylaws, is pro agricultural business. Landscape is the single largest agricultural product in the state of Utah, above alfalfa, and I'm talking dollars, dollars and cents, okay?
Oh, yeah, you've got a good business.
And so, within your own rules, my landscape business falls within the agricultural design of your town. And so I, that was why I went in and says, "Hey, this'll work here."
Okay.
Okay, and you guys granted me, listen, you guys, just a minute. You guys granted me my business license to do so. There's been talk about the fact I don't live in that house. And my argument is this. If you cut hay off a field, and you take your hay and you store it in another barn and sell it out of that barn, that's basically the same thing I'm doing with my trees. Okay, I'm bringing agricultural product to my facility, and then I'm taking them to my job. And so if the house becomes an issue, I won't have a renter. But honestly, the house isn't even arguing, as far as I'm concerned, because you've got farmers all over this valley doing just that. They're cutting hay on five-week currier, 10-day currier, they're taking it to their barn over here, and they're selling it out of there. It's no different than what I'm doing. So I bought that property so I could run my landscape business, number one.
Okay.
I bought it, secondly, for an investment. Right now, I have no intention of developing that property today, I don't know when I'm going to. But the atmosphere that is going on within this community and in this thing, I just feel it's time to make the play and try and get my zoning changed. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Any other questions at all?
Yes, do you know what the laws are with the septic, getting, putting the septic in there?
Well, right now, your zoning is one per five, okay, which requires that you would have to put...
Well, if we, if it was turned into commercial, what the septic is, what's commercial?
You would have to, I mean, no matter what you do, you would be limited on the amount of density that you could put on that property because you don't have access to a major septic line, okay? So you could have a standard system, I'm not exactly sure what the limitations would be on that, but it would certainly be far more limited than the other three quarters that can just hook on to a septic line.
And if you got confirmation that Heber City would accept you and...
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter.
So that if they're utilities or sewer, they didn't want to do something, they couldn't stop you?
No.
You know, if you're in the town, if you want to leave, where you... How are you leaving, I'm just curious how you're going to leave if you were to leave. You go immediately, you go into county, you go into, where would you go?
Well...
In that time span that it takes for them to accept you? You'd be an island, wouldn't you?
Hmm, not really, because you're kind of on the edge, you'd probably become part of the county initially, and you're not...
Well, does Heber City, Heber City on the side of Mill Road, and you got Daniel's here, if that's cut off, we're not going into Heber City, couldn't that be an island?
Hmm, maybe, but you're going to go in and access, I mean, immediately you're going to apply for, you know, annexation into Heber City. So it would be frankly, if that was the argument that you wanted to make, I mean, I don't get in the games, I mean, sure. That's just, I mean, if you're looking for technicalities here, I just don't play that game. I mean, the practical reality is...
You're going to have to point, one of the points you need to meet.
Or you can't, you cannot create, and if you don't create it, that's not a...
It's not an island because of the roads, though. That's definitely a consequence.
The practical reality is, if we went over to district court and the judge, I mean, if that was the argument is that you're creating an island, it's like, no.
Just asking a question.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that, I mean, if you're going to deny him, guys, if you're going to deny him straight up, put your money where your mouth is. It's time, basically, as a community to say, "You've said you want commercial up and down this corridor, but you're doing nothing, you're doing nothing, or nothing to provide that." And so, you know, pretty difficult to sit here and say, "Oh, you know, yeah, we're not going, we're going to keep him in, but we're not going to do anything." And that's the practical reality is, if you wanted to define yourself by what you are not, you're never going to win. You can't do it. If you're defining your community by, "We are not, we don't want growth," I've already told you, that is a very, very difficult idea to defend because people like this can just simply disconnect from your ground. You cannot use lack of services to control growth, cannot do it, cannot do it long term. You need to come up with a plan, and you need to decide what you're going to do because more and more of this is going to happen. And I'm telling you that from a legal standpoint, you can't stop this, okay? That's what I'm saying, so, it is what it is.
Any other questions from the public, anyone over here?
Kristen Vasquez, so just to clarify...
I didn't hear you.
Kristen Vasquez.
Thank you.
So my question is, just clarifying, Mayor, your question, which is, if I understood the question correctly, it's the not-argument question would be, so we don't know, tell me if I'm wrong, we don't know if Heber or the county is willing to provide the sewer services, and if so, at what cost, right?
Oh, no, we've already talked to Heber, I mean, there's already discussions going on with Heber. There would be an application filed immediately with Heber City to annex into them. I mean, they, it's 60 feet away, they're not going to deny annexation. I mean, they've got great big mains city that they've already put in. There's no indication for Heber to leave and annex, it's in, they like commercial.
It's nothing to do with liking commercial, I'm just curious to figure out, you know, because I think, you know, one of the legal elements is making sure that you are able to not put a burden on the entity that will be providing the sewer services should you disconnect, right? And so I just wanted some clarification for the record as to what, you guys, I'm coming in late, I don't know, I'm just curious as to what that looks like, what that discussion is.
So I, when I was considering starting this process, I went and talked to the city engineer to see if all this was a viable option for me.
The city of Heber engineer?
The city, yeah, the Heber City engineer, to see if it was a viable option for me. I have nothing in writing, I have nothing like that, but verbally, I have been told that all this is a doable option. So, like Corbin says, once we get through this process, I go to them, they adopt me. Now, I would like, if this is okay, to talk to him for a couple minutes in private because I have something I'd like to say, but I don't want to say them without his advice.
So you understand it's not a court of law here, it's a public hearing, we're just trying to understand the subject. Nate, can you make it quick?
Yeah, the public needs to comment, so why don't we do this, let's just do the public comment, and then we'll jump outside and...
I totally agree, okay. You want to finish it up before we have anything else, and let your main friend or main guest start the public, you know, presumably. Can you open to anybody that wants to make? Any comments?
So now your question is over and out, public comment?
And now, public comment?
Yeah.
Oh, well, he knew I'd be here.
I did, but you have the twenty short person here.
I'd have stood as a statue if I wasn't here. And I do have a statement, but Stephanie Mulston-Hume, I share property land with Nate. So I'm going to have to dance here. Enterprise zone. 2007, Paul Kenner applied for your enterprise zone with the state of Utah. He told me, his very words were, he looked at the map, city, county, our boundaries, and thought, "Well, that would be a good place for one," without really knowing what was there on our triangle, which is about 25 acres, give or take, I don't know how many. It goes from Wanda webs, 2930 South Highway 40, down to 3000 South, back along Mill Road to Highway 40 and back up to Wandas. There are six, there are eight property owners, there are six homes there, okay? It's a residential neighborhood. He told me that this was a possible tax break for businesses that qualified with the state, and it was not mandatory that any property listed in that RA5 zone should or could go commercial. He also sent me to the state website, which states, and it's 63 M-1-408. Duration of designation, each enterprise zone has a duration of five years, at the end of which the county may reapply for the designation. Have we done that? Yes, it...
Does that say county or is it city?
This is for Daniel's, this is the state. So have you guys reapplied, otherwise, it's null and void. And I brought this up in another meeting, so...
The town has re...
And, and Corbin, I don't mean to call you on the carpet here...
Oh, no, you haven't, you haven't, I just said it hadn't been reapplying.
Okay, I don't mean to call you on the carpet, but you grew up in Daniel's.
Yes, I did.
You know why we established Daniel. You know why we made those boundaries, and why we made those boundaries, and why they are where they are at, okay? The commercial corridor, Nate does not have an access off of the highway, which our commercial corridor, I have talked to Chip more than once about this, the access off the highway is what we want for the commercial corridor, not into the town, not bringing commercial vehicles into the town. We don't want commercial access, nor should we have commercial access on Mill Road in the middle of Heber Meadows bus stop, which comes eight times a day. I don't have little kids anymore, my kids are your age. But those are little kids in my neighborhood, and I'm just as concerned with them as I would be for my own kids and my own grandkids. my own grandkids. There's, there's no reason for bringing big trucks into that area. Nate brought, bought this property October two thousand and thirteen, about then. You submitted an application for rezoning to commercial. He was supposed to come before the planning commission on October seventh, two thousand and thirteen, but before you got to that meeting, you withdrew your application. Now, I didn't know why, but at that time, I had seventy signatures of Daniel's residence against this rezoning of his property. We were concerned about the increased traffic problems this would cause, putting our family's safety and livelihood in danger. Once this property was rezoned commercial, there's a two-page list of potential businesses that could be put on that property. Nate did not buy this property blindfolded, he knew exactly what he was getting into, because we had numerous discussions. This was the third time that the property had come up for rezoning on commercial. He knew that it was in Daniel, he also knew that the townspeople did what they thought about the commercial property, and that he could operate this landscaping business in that RA zoning. Residential, agricultural, he fits agriculture. And I can tell you that those seventy people on that petition, their, uh, their opinions have not changed about commercial coming inside our town, inside where our kids play and, and, um, Nate's been a very good neighbor, he's done what he promised to do, other than a truck with sod that I watched someone unload on May eleventh with a skid steer back and forth across Mill Road into your property. I understand there was a stipulation on the house, I didn't know about that, but we've had no problems with any of these renters, I think he said four or five renters in there, we've had no problems with the renters, but we established the Town of Daniel to keep Heber City from annexing every piece of property they could into the city, and, and Heber City's a mess. Ask anybody, they'll tell you. We, uh, we annexed it to keep investors from buying up all of our hayfields and turning them into overcrowded subdivisions, like what's going in across the road. I hope all this time and effort and money that we spent on becoming a town is, is not going to be in vain. There's a piece of property right across the street, well, Corbin says there's three now, uh, in Heber City that would, would suit Nate's commercial business without any problem. I do know that I've had, got friends on Mill Road that has hooked up to the sewer, they're not in the city, but they have hooked up to Heber City's sewer. Once this, once this can of worms is opened for one property owner to jump the fence into Heber City, what's going to stop the chain reaction for others to follow? Before long, we don't have a town because of all the bench jumpers. Nate has hookups for Daniel culinary water, don't he have the, no culinary, you still running the well? Uh, Daniel irrigation water, does he get to use those in Heber City?
They don't share, so...
If it's been historically, well, I can remember, irrigation, if it, if it's been historically used on that property, in, in which I believe there was some...
That's in Daniel irrigation bylaws, that historic irrigation, so that's...
So, it's, there, whether it's annexed in the...
Because I know the water's a big concern with everybody, and all this building going around us, and what's, where's the water coming from, and, um, I hope our Daniel boundaries are set in stone, safe and tight. And I ask the Daniel council to be very thoughtful in their decisions for this piece of property. I'm afraid I'm going to become the island of him. I'm going to be the island in the middle of, of commercial, and, and they're all going to annex into Heber City, and I'm going to be a Daniel island, and probably be forced into Heber City, and I don't want to be in Heber City. And I do have Daniel culinary water. This, Corbin said it was going to cri, it wasn't going to cripple the town, but if we open this can of worms, I believe that's crippling the town. I believe every little teeny piece that you take, whether it's on the east end, whether it's down on the west end, every little piece that they keep taking off of Daniel is going to go, and, and we're not going to be a town anymore. We're not going to be, we're not going to be at the town that we started and made because we wanted to have the rural atmosphere in our town. And, and like I said, he's been a good neighbor, but I hope he turn down this application, because I don't think that our town needs to be cut here and cut there and just for somebody else's property.
Thank you, Stephanie.
My name is Scott Baker, hello, Corbin.
Hi, Scott.
I live down, just down the road, in fact, I live on property that's still owned, okay? Stephanie took a lot of my, my thunder. I work in Salt Lake, and what I see here is a concern that I have. We did establish a Town of Daniel to protect from the encroachment of Heber City. I was talking to people living in Heber Meadows, and they want to denspack that part west of Stephanie's place. If you want to know what it looks like, they want it to look like the stuff west of Long Oaks. And he said, and that was land grabbed from us before we get in the town. So, knowing that, this is one of those things that I'm really concerned with, because what I see going on here, if they take one chunk and move it to Heber City, then there's going to be another chunk, and what you're going to have is the Draper effect. Have you seen Draper recently? Have you seen Harriman recently? It looks like Southern California, and that's not what we moved to Daniel for. Nate, if, as I understand, you did not go through planning and zoning and apply for a zoning change, correct?
Well, I did, I did apply, and they had a zoning meeting, which I was never notified about, and I was not present at that zoning meeting.
Then I would recommend we go through the process.
I don't, and so I'm saying they held the zoning meeting without me there to represent myself, which, in my opinion, was totally wrong.
It may be wrong.
It should not have happened.
I have some knowledge of zoning because I live with one of the zoning people.
So, anyways, that set me off on the wrong foot right there, because in my opinion, that meeting should have ever happened without me, because I didn't know about it, or I would have been there, for sure, okay? So, anyways, I'm not trying, anyways, that's why...
Okay, so, I understand that. My concern is, if they take one chunk, if they take Nate's property, move it to Heber, somebody else has a wild hair and says, "I want to do this." Pretty soon, we get cherry picked, and cherry picked, and we're going to lose the reason why we established our town. I've had offers from my, from friends of mine and other people to build on my property, but I have, I have seven acres, I can only put one house on it. I have to abide by the procedures and the policies that we have in the city. This is one of those things like the proverbial camel intent. One should get the nose in, pretty soon you have shoulder, pretty soon you got hindquarters, pretty soon you're out the door. And that's what I'm afraid of here, that if we do this, even for the best of reasons, for noble causes, it is going to be detrimental to the Town of Daniel. It is just a slow roll downhill. I know we talked about this here, maybe what we need to do is send out a survey, maybe have a, a resolution to see if we want to do this. But if we let one person go, and it could be another, and then another, and then we'll have nothing. And I don't want to live like Draper, I don't want to live like, like Harriman. Rapid City, South Dakota's looking really good right about now. When you get the land developers coming in and buying everything up, saying, "Go ahead and check." I mean, Mr. Selish came and tried to do that to us. Said, "Is that what we want? Do we want quality of life, or do we want to look like Southern California?" And I'd say, "I don't want to." And so, I'm just asking the Town of Daniel to either, and Nate to go through the process...